We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Carlos Campos from the Cavalier Baptist Church.
Dear God, thank you so much for this day. Father, we come to you and we just thank you for just how much you love us, Father. Thank you so much for your mercy and how you're always faithful to us even when we're not. And Father, right now, we just want to lift up the city of Taylorville and just everyone in it, all its residents. And Father, pray for the police officers and the firemen and the EMTs and everyone that volunteers and works to make this city a better city. And thank you for their work. We thank you for that. And Father, pray for their protection. And right now, Father, we just want to lift up the aldermen and our mayor as the next few moments, as they make decisions to benefit this community. Give them the wisdom and the knowledge to make the right decisions and allow everything that in their life and everything that they do tonight to glorify you and benefit Taylorville. We love you, Father. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Budd.
Here.
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
Mark Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
All eight aldermen present. First thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of amendments of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation. Alderman Dortchinez makes the motion, second by Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, we have a resolution being the IDOT Construction Engineering Services Agreement for federal participation between the city of Taylorville and Green and Bradford Incorporated this regarding the Spillway Bridge Project.
Your Honor, I'll make that motion and speak to the issue if there's any questions from my fellow aldermen.
I'll second. Second by Alderman Voda. Any questions? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amending paragraph B of section eight dash four dash one of the city code this regarding water customer activation fees.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Alderman Dortchinez.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bertle. Discussion or comment?
Your Honor, may I make a comment?
Please.
I believe the ordinance has been prepared in accordance with the motion that was directed to me. I would point out that when you lowered the in-town, the residence rates and the non-resident rates during normal business hours, the charges for hours outside business hours used to be double the rate that you had during normal business hours. Your motion didn't include that, so I didn't change that. I just point that out to you. I did not know what your intentions were, and I think your water superintendent is on vacation, so I'm opting to check with him. So you might want to revisit that at a later date.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance adding section eight, four, dash, six, A of the city code this regarding fire hydrants outside city limits. Can I move? Alderman Voda.
Second.
Second by Alderman Heatherling. Questions? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings the city attorney updates.
Gentlemen, if you'll allow me this opportunity before I actually give my report to you, I have a gentleman in the audience that I would like to introduce to you. He's sitting behind me. His name is Jay Lindsay. He's an attorney who has just joined our firm today. He and his wife and eleven-month-old child moved down here from Chicago last weekend. He's a four-year Army veteran, a machine gunner, has seen combat in Afghanistan and I think South Africa. He's also a graduate of SIU School of Law, and he's been practicing in Chicago for two years. So he's joined our firm as an associate attorney today, and he'll probably be working with us on our ordinance violations and on our ordinance calls. So with that, Jay, you want to stand up and?
Welcome.
Thank you.
He's used to battle. He fit right in here.
I think so. He did well in his interview, let me tell you that. Let me first start off with, today I had a conference call. You have a pending appeal that you, with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency regarding the underground storage tank issue out at the airport. That appeal's been pending, as I read the file, for about a couple of years now. And I had a conference call today that was scheduled by the hearing officer for the Pollution Control Board and with the EPA attorney. I also spoke with your, from CAM Solutions, that's the outfit that's doing the background work for this, John Americal. Apparently, you now have a correction action plan and a budget that was approved in part and denied in part. It's going to be re-looked at by EPA, so the scheduling of another conference call's been set for December 3rd to see where you're at. When I looked at the file, gentlemen, I see that there's a tremendous amount of funds here that's being spent and is an issue here. And I've asked the city clerk to provide me with the copy of the contract to take another look at to see what your exposure might be if EPA denies all the reimbursement of removal of that storage tank. And I think the clerk's going to get that to me probably tomorrow. The second thing I wanted to bring up to you is that in your packet, I put together an economic incentive development agreement that you asked with regards to the Taylorville Cinema. There's some information that the city clerk is, and the mayor is getting, has to get information from those folks to fill in the blanks before you can take action on it. That's why it's not on the agenda tonight. But I am going to ask you, when I looked at that, I prepared it as you directed, to take it back to the appropriate committee when we get the information and look at it. You have, you are, it is in the enterprise zone. You are this, you are a party to an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the county that addresses economic incentives, that provides for certification fees, that is split to help fund the enterprise officer. You need to think about those things. Also, you have an ordinance, ordinance twenty-one sixty-three that talks in terms of when you can or cannot give away water free, that we need to take another look at. We need to also take a look at your bond ordinance and see if there's any restrictions in that concerning the water usage. What I'm suggesting, you can do a lot of things, what you want to do in this ordinance that I put together, but you may have to change other things that are already on the books to get that job done. So I invite you to take another look at that before we vote on it. The third item is that by tomorrow, and I'll get a copy to Alderman Voda sometime tomorrow, we're changing, as you remember, that hunting, the documents are going to sign to make sure that every hunter that's going to participate in city of Taylorville will have their own insurance. So there'll be language put in that document that I'll get to your superintendent tomorrow, and I'll give a copy to Alderman Voda if he has any questions about that. The last thing I'd like to talk about is that I've, I've seen the motions that you have on file tonight, we're going to talk about later, about the jurisdictional transfer. I've read the minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee. I've read the article in the newspaper that talked about that particular meeting. I have some things that I would like to put in a memo to all of you to kind of refresh everyone's recollection as to what rules we should follow in a committee meeting, how they are proceeding. You are governed by Robert's Rules of Order by ordinance, if you don't have a rule that otherwise applies, in my, in my opinion. And if any of you have ever read Robert's Rules of Order, I took a glance at it over the weekend, it's about five hundred and some odd pages, and it's probably one of the most difficult things to read and understand and to make any sense out of. But I think the intent of that, I've got some ideas that I would, from a legal standpoint, is to kind of help you and suggest, make some suggestions as how these types of meetings should be run and when, and motions are to be addressed and not addressed, and what kind of motions can be addressed outside of an agenda item. Also, I will put in this memorandum to use my comments and my interpretation of the Open Meetings Act when it refers to that one sentence about the right of the public to speak at a public meeting. I will tell you that there's no case law to date that interprets that sentence right now. There's a lot of commentary going out about it, and there's some things that maybe the legislature should have said and didn't, and I'll, I'll share those thoughts, my thoughts with you, and make you certain recommendations to all of you that you may need to tweak some of your rules in conjunction with that statute. You can choose to ignore my recommendations, but I think, give me that fair shot, first of all, to let you know what I think the law is, how it should proceed, and then you can decide how we go on forward. And perhaps what did or did not take place at a committee level recently, we can have a better guidance or understanding of how we should proceed in the future. Does that sound like a plan to any of you, all of you?
Alderman Heatherling.
When you make your recommendations, I really hope that you don't come up with a bunch of new protocol for us. I would hope that you would just highlight that in the past, the procedures and the protocols that we used worked for us. I really don't want a bunch of new protocols. I believe it's unnecessary. So I hope that is within your recommendations that you distribute with your memo.
And I don't think it's going to be something that you need, that'll keep you up at night. I've got some, a thought that perhaps with one or two sentences in our agenda will probably address what I'm thinking about in the future. And I think that will satisfy, because you guys have worked very well with your committee level for years and years and years. And we'll just put a little rule that says this is what happens in this kind of situation, and then there's no, there's no issue about it. Sound all right? Okay. With that being said, too, and when I read the motions at the Street Sewer Committee, I know what the motions say tonight about motion to proceed with certain things, but when I read the minutes of that meeting, that didn't appear to be the intent of the committee, that it was merely a motion, if I can just, if, maybe it was a motion to direct the city engineer to enter into discussions with IDOT concerning the potential jurisdictional transfer of four roadways. Boom, 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 boom. And I thought, as I read it, that's how I thought that the, that the discussion went that evening. And when it comes to making those motions, I would suggest that someone move to amend the four motions that you have and address it that way, because it's really not committing the city to anything, it's just merely a motion to explore what's available. Then you take it back to committee and say, well, what kind of money are you going to get? What's going to happen if this happens? Or if you take the road or don't take the road? That'd be my suggestion.
Anyone have questions for the city attorney? Alderman Coontz.
I know we touched on this a little bit, but while you, the mayor, and Pam are in the same room, let me touch on it again.
All right.
The cone contract, you seem to be fine with the cone elevator contract so far. If the three of you can get together and let me know if the contract's good with you guys, and if, if the, the project should be rebid or not, let me know. I have surely nobody eighteen whether or not to put it on this month's agenda, if that's all right.
No, I expect to speak with the mayor and clerk about that tomorrow, because we have an email that came across last week, I think, about wanting to talk and follow discussion. So we'll address that tomorrow sometime.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to mayor updates, just got a couple of quick things here. You know, we hear a lot of negative things going on without us never having enough money to do anything and, you know, losing businesses and losing jobs and everything else. But every once in a while, there's some good news here that sometimes we, we forget to mention. For example, Watson Foods, you know, they're, they're planning on an expansion right now, and we don't hear enough about that kind of thing going on. They're just one of the couple different groups that are expanding their business here in town. Goodies Department Store, that's going to be opening up, you know, sometime in November, and, you know, that's, that'll be a very welcome addition for the city. I want to congratulate Ed Downs, his place up there on the south side of the square, the store Best for Less. He's redone the front of that, and I think it looks great. So if you see him, you know, thank him for that. Again, it's another one of those things where it seems to be snowballing up there on the square where the building owners are using the program we have and, you know, taking the initiative to go ahead and improve the appearance of their buildings, and so we all win when, when that happens. Alstrom's is another example. They're, they're installing some new pollution control equipment out there right now, so you don't make that kind of investment if you're planning on leaving. So, you know, I take that as a very good sign, so I think that's good. And the only other thing I've got is, again, you know, next year's going to be the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary of not only Taylorville but the county. And so the historical tidbit for tonight is, I'd have to ask you guys, does everyone know where Taylorville got its name from? It was after action had been taken to decide the location of where the county seat, the physical location of it, some of the owners there held a dinner party at the home of Daniel C. Good, because he was the former owner of the land here around where Taylorville now is. Well, at this dinner party, the guests were provided with an ample supply of some rye whiskey, Old Benagahila, I guess is how you pronounce it. Well, apparently, after feeling the effects of this whiskey, some of the guests proceeded, decided they would proceed to name the new county seat and decided that it should probably be named in honor of someone there at that, the dinner party. And the honor ended up going to John Taylor of Springfield, Illinois, you know. And he also happened to be one of the owners of that property up there where the county now sits, so he was part of that corporation. So there's a little historical tidbit. Let's move on to committee reports. Discussions and or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matter regarding the following subject matters that were discussed at the committee level. And we start off with the Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the T.C. charitable fund drive to be held September the twenty-seventh and September the twenty-eighth at the intersection of West Main Cross and Webster Street.
Okay. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Budd? Discussion or comment?
A comment, Your Honor.
Please.
Is that remind the council that this requires a permit under your city code section, so your motion really is to approve or permit once it's submitted with the requisite insurance. You have that already in place.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll amend my motion to reflect that.
Okay. You amend yours.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussions? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the United Way of Christian County Shred Event on September the fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, from nine AM to eleven AM on the south side, outside lane of the square.
Okay, got a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the request from Taylorville Main Street to close off the inside parking spaces around the square on October the twelfth from ten AM to one PM for a Meet the Machines event.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the August the twentieth, tree board minutes and to allow Sally Bethel, seven oh one Thompson Street, to remove two trees on her property at her expense.
Second.
Alderman Heatherling? I'm sorry. Alderman Bertle? Motion made by Alderman Walters. Discussion or comment?
Yes, one comment.
Go ahead, Alderman Jones.
After, after looking at this issue which has been going on for a while, are they going to replant the new trees on the boulevard or are they going to plant them in their yard?
Go ahead, Alderman Walters.
One will be on the boulevard and one will be on, in the yard.
Okay. And when our boulevard will come from that list of approved trees.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because there's, that one tree doesn't need to be back on the boulevard.
Right.
Nor do any trees.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's just what I feel.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, that motion passes.
Make a motion to forward the use of ward money to the ordinance committee.
Okay.
The ordinance committee can use all we want, so I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
The next four motions, Your Honor, I'll amend. Motion to direct the city engineer to enter into discussions with the Illinois Department of Transportation concerning the potential jurisdictional transfer of the following roadway. The first one is Morrison Drive from Ave's Way to East Lawn Drive.
Okay, can I get a second on that one?
Second.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion would be motion to direct the city engineer to enter into discussions with the Illinois Department of Transportation concerning the potential jurisdictional transfer of the following roadway, and that would be of a section of old Route forty-eight by ADM. And for clarification, it's a small section that's beyond the swinging gate as you make that turn to go across the railroad tracks.
Okay. Can I get a second on that motion?
A second.
Alderman Budd? Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Mark Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion, now, would be motion to direct the city engineer to enter into discussions with the Illinois Department of Transportation concerning the potential jurisdictional transfer of the following roadway, and it would be Illinois Route forty-eight south of the airport.
Okay, got a second on that one?
Second one, comment.
Alderman Coontz, go ahead with your comment.
Out of respect to everybody involved, I will vote yes on this, but for everybody involved and the people out in the audience and in that area, unless, I'll state again, unless something major happens or information coming forth I'm not aware of, I will be voting no as far as the transfer itself, but I, out of respect, will like to see what the state at least has to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Bertle?
I'm assuming that this step will allow, we have some people in the audience tonight, and they were also in the audience the night of the committee meeting, that wanted to be heard, whether we agree or disagree with what they're about, that they want to tell us. I think it's still the thing to do as far as people that are elected is to listen to the people of the community, whether they live inside our community or not. Is this going to allow them an opportunity to speak again at another date, or is this going to bypass that? Because they're just going to bypass it on the vote now.
Again, the thing you have to remember, what we're having here is the fact that the information will be brought back to us to review and discuss at another meeting. So yes, they would have, be on that meeting, it will be an agenda item on that meeting, and we will word it so that the public does have a chance to talk.
As long as they get an apple, time to speak.
Any other questions? Alderman Voda?
I'll be voting no on this, only because we've discussed this in pretty good detail amongst ourselves. We continue to say we don't have money. Mr. Dortchinez made a comment one night at the meeting when this was first brought under any other matters. Why would we want to take more roads into the community when we have trouble taking care of the ones we have none? I respect that, that comment. So this is one of those things that, is it something we need to do, and if so, what is the justification behind it? And at this time, I don't see the just cause for bringing it into the city, just to add more burden on the finances of the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dortchinez.
I'm going to vote yes now, but I reserve the right to vote no when the information comes in.
Alderman Heatherling?
We haven't voted yet, but I will be voting no, I'm not in support of this. The other three proposals for jurisdictional transfers involves properties that are really within the city limits right now. This particular property, this south Route forty-eight, is outside of jurisdictional Taylorville. I just do not see the need nor the necessity of trying to get a jurisdictional transfer on that.
Anyone else?
And we already know also.
Okay. All right. All right. Anyone else before we take the vote?
No, I'm just gonna surprise you.
Oh, I don't think so. Roll call, please.
Bernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberlin.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Abstain.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
So I believe the motion passes four in favor, three against, and one extension.
You would vote on the tie, on the four, half the aldermen.
I vote yes on this. Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the pay request, number one, from McIntyre and Company, in the amount of $120,848.62, with 10% retain each, for the Ward Two, City Park Edition, Phase Four, Park Avenue, Storm Sewer Project.
Second.
Second, Alman Heberlin, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Rob Heberlin.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dortchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Finally, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of $420,099.53.
So moved.
Okay, can I get a second? Second, Alman Walters, go ahead with your comment, Alman Bud.
Street Department, Lewis Marsh, $43,733.78. Walker Company, $5,512.95. Hall Signs, $1,487.24. Phil Tellus for sidewalks and curbs, $3,330.90. Sewer Department, McIntyre, $120,848.62. Airport, Arrow Energy Fuel, $37,432.70. Police Department, Kaiser's Police Supply for Ammo, $5,258.8. Uniform Allowance, $1,332.15. Fire Department Vehicle Maintenance and Test, $3,927.70. Water Department Chemicals, $14,630.27. Insurance for all departments, $102,790.95. Workers' Comp for all departments, $23,787. Phone for all departments, $420.09. Electrical for all departments, $14,381.43. Garbage, including wages, for, for all departments, $1,953. Christian County Treasurer's Office for Real Estate Taxes Airport, $1,958.32. Unique Temporary Help for all departments, $2,973.24. And Green and Bradford, all departments, $15,020.51. And those all totaled to $400,637.43, of a total of $420,099.53.
Thank you for the update. Any questions? Alman Jones?
Just one, and I believe, give this to Alman Walters. On page eight, it's bill for Green and Bradford for engineering South Sandy Lane road dedication. They had to do engineering for a road dedication?
Yes, this, this is a rather lengthy, drawn-out procedure that had been going on for a number of years, trying to correct for these two Ward Two aldermen here. It entails some easements, it entails some surveying, it entails some engineering work that was done years ago by someone else that wasn't completed.
Okay.
It involves easements also for stormwater across various properties, so yes.
Okay, so it, it's pretty extensive.
Yes, it is.
The amount, okay, then I'm fine with it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, per Public Act 96-1473, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for any, I have city residents, but that may be one place we may change.
Any person.
Any person wishing to address the council on issues that are relevant to the council. Would anyone out there in the audience like to address the council?
Yeah, well.
Please stand up and please give us your name.
Skip Mill.
Okay.
I, I find it difficult to understand, how many councilmen should be against the jurisdictional transfer for this old Route 48. But at the same time, you both would spend money to pursue just that. If you're for it.
Sure.
Or you're not for it, why, why do you want to spend X amount of dollars on pursuing?
I could, I think I could answer that. First of all, there's an unknown out there. In other words, we don't know what the state might be willing to give us, if anything. And, and, and we need to know that to make that decision. For, for the other taxpayers in the city, I mean, I realize you folks don't want that, and I, I understand that. And I think, you know, probably unless the state really surprises us on what they might give us, you know, my, my gut feeling is that will probably be voted down, we won't pursue that jurisdictional transfer. But for the rest of citizens, we at least need to have that question answered before we say yea or nay to it. I mean, I opened up the other alderman here, is that a fair statement? We need to know what that amount is.
Usually a jurisdictional transfer changes both parts.
True, I mean, I.
None of the, none of the people that live out there see anything, have even requested anything from the city to have this, this road that can change.
Sure.
Well, I mean, again, it's, it's one of those things where, again, that's what we have to decide, and, and, you know, they, they obviously have jurisdictional transfers for a reason. Now, when we have the next meeting, which you guys will be invited to, you will give us your reasons on, and why you think it's a bad idea. And again, but we'll, we'll have to say, at some point, sometimes you have to say, well, in spite of what the local people may want, we have to see, is there a greater good, you know, for the rest of the citizens of this town? And we, we may say, well, it's not there, it's just not there, and, and we may vote no on it.
What would be that benefit?
Well, again, we'll, we'll have to discuss that among ourselves. I can't speak for these gentlemen. We have to take that information in, and they have to decide that, just like we decide anything else.
If the road is improved, I assume that all those dollars are gonna be taken and improve that road.
Well, again.
How do that benefit the rest, rest of the residents of the city?
Well, that's something, again, we have to hear from the state. In, in the past, sometimes they go ahead and bring that road up to grade before they give us any money. And now, they may say, hey, this money can be used for maintenance in the future. As you know, you know, because of the, you know, some of the laws here in the state of Illinois, we have to pay prevailing wages unless we do the work ourselves. So there could be a cost savings there. And so we might be able to do more with that money than the state itself could do.
Do you think it's more beneficial to the city than just the residents that live out there?
That, I don't know, that's one of those things we'll have to, have to discuss. And again, I, you know, we'll have to see how it goes. We could do this with every single property and all the jurisdictional transfers we've had over the years and everything else. Again, those are the kind of things that can surface and the questions that can, can come out. But this is why this, you know, system is designed this way, so that you, folks do have a chance to say, well, here's why we don't think it makes any sense at all, and we certainly don't see anything that we would gain from it, and get that message out to us, so we can weigh that with what the state may or may not offer us and make our decisions.
My wife and I, and we raised a family in town, nineteen years. We liked it in town. We took advantage of the sidewalk, certain kind of participation, that our street improved. We were able to walk to school, we were able to bicycle over to the shopping center. Our dream was to get out of town, and that dream came true. We built our own house. Didn't have it built, we built our own house. I wouldn't live in that place if I didn't build that myself. We all enjoy doing what we do out there. We like to shoot guns out there. We have animals out there. One, they have a pond out there. If this gets put into the city, will you have to put fence around that pond? We have a swimming pool. Will we have to put fence around the swimming pool? I, I don't mow my entire five and a half acres. I let nature have half of it. There's deer out there, there's squirrels out there, keep calling it squirrel park. Fight with the raccoons, but are, are we gonna have to maintain it to your standards in the city? Can I let my grass get this tall? We have a neighbor out there, best neighbor in the world. Best neighbor to me is, you stay over there and I'll stay over here and we'll get along great. He lets his grass get a little hot. That's okay, I just mow a little bit of his grass. My other neighbor mows a little bit of his grass. We get along great. We do not need, or we do, we want your restrictions out there in the country. I can't go out and shoot my guns. When my son comes home, he, he's a special agent at the Secret Service. We go out and shoot when he comes home. We couldn't do any of that. This was our dream twenty years ago, and, and we finally got it to come true. We feel like we live in our own little park out there. It's a hell of a lot of work. Believe me, it's a lot of work. We take care of it, we love it out there. We want to be in it.
I think those, those are some very good points, and, and things that need to be considered when we do take this to the committee. So I, I hope you will come back and, and, and share those again at that committee level. Anyone else? Please stand up and give your name.
I've lived down on the end of that old 48 for, since 1962. And I'm in agreement with Skip. I'm on the other side of the railroad, so I don't know if it will affect me or not. But we like it the way it is. And as I understand, our constitution, this is supposed to be a government of the people, by the people, for the people. The people out there don't want it. We like it the way it is, and we don't have a representation setting up there on that board. So the only representation we have is to come here and express our views. And ever since that old highway's been there and said, if I come out of the service, there have been many a time that I, myself, and some of the other residents that live out there, have done the maintenance work on that road. Clearing the ice storm, my nephew and I, we cleared probably fifty to sixty trees off the roadway that had fallen, so that we could get in now. I've cleared snow, we mow it, we keep it mowed. You can drive out there and look, the only place they mowed is where there's not a residence to the bus, the old highway. You know, so it's close to town, we like being close to town, but we're part of Johnson Township. And if anybody's gonna have jurisdiction, I feel like Johnson Township ought to have jurisdiction over that. So I'm just saying, for myself, I'm totally against it. And my feeling is, I've lived there since 1962. I love the place I got, I built my own home on it also. I pay my taxes, you all get a portion of my taxes. But if it comes, if it comes to where my property's looking to get annexed in the city, our property's going for sale.
Well, and I think that's a key thing, and again, I hope you folks could come to the committee and, and share your thoughts then. I do have to point out here, though, that no one has talked about annexation. See, you're leaping on, hey, well, I think this may happen and everything else, but, but no one's to discuss that. Again, we had three other properties tonight we talked about with the same, same idea. We've taken other property in with, you know, for, using the same method and all. And, and I, and I think, at least for some of the aldermen, you may be off, off, off target in suggesting that that's why they're doing this. Because I know with some of them, that's not it. Now, can I tell you that it will not happen? No, I cannot tell you it will not happen, but, you know, I see my attorney's got a comment here.
Well, let me, let me just maybe kind of get this cut to butt here, because it sounds like the folks behind me, pardon my back here, but, that they're here because they're fearful that because you take over jurisdiction of that particular roadway, you now have, their property becomes contiguous, and you can thereby annex their property into town. My understanding, each of these property owners that, that are out in that area have all signed annexation agreements with the city as a condition of being serviced with city water.
I have.
Those that are, if their property ever becomes contiguous to the city by contract, they're obligated to annex in. That's what they signed when they got city water. But based upon the current configuration of the property, as I understand it is now, and based upon, if, if in fact you vote to take in this road under a jurisdictional transfer, that will not be the tool that you can use to annex these folks in. They will not be contiguous as a matter of law, under the curse of the law. So there's a lot of discussion and fears, in my mind, about nothing right now, because you won't have that power to annex them in by the mere fact that you take jurisdictional transfer of this roadway. And I hope that'll help maybe future discussions in that regard. Roadways that are parallel, it doesn't make any difference if Johnson Township owns a road, or the state owns a road, or the township, or, or a county owns a road, as long as it's not a toll road, and if it runs parallel with your existing corporate limits, you then can annex that roadway, and it, to get the property on the other side. But I understand this roadway is perpendicular, at an angle. It doesn't meet, in my mind, the case law that talks about the, the parallel requirements for that particular annexation power. So I think if, if that'll help the discussion in the future, so be it. But that, the annexation has nothing to do with this jurisdictional transfer, as I read the minutes, and as I've been talking to some of the aldermen, and as I understand the law. If that'll help.
Alman Dortchinez, but I, I don't want us to slip into exactly what we're gonna be having this meeting, committee meeting for. I, I don't want to do it twice, so go ahead with your comment.
A jurisdictional, jurisdictional transfer, does that mean, if that would occur, would the city own that property?
But it would.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
But the city can own property two miles from here, and unless that city-owned property is contiguous to our corporate limits, or we can take the, recognize width of a strip going out to it, so we can annex it, and make it contiguous, our hands are tied by law. So I think this discussion may be getting a little bit in the wrong direction.
Sure, sure.
Is my only comment.
Can, I'll take one more out there, please stand up and give your name.
Hi, I'm Carla Locke. I do live out there too, plus I am Johnson Township clerk. So I just wanted to let the board know that Johnson Township has already sent into IDOT a form letter requesting jurisdiction for that road there.
Okay.
So my understanding is, for all of us that go up here, why you would want to waste your time, your money, if Johnson Township would like to have that in order, the city would take it, since none of us want to live out there.
Well, as far as wasting money, again, we, we have voted to go with the three other properties, and there'd be very little price difference just to ask that same question of that, so.
I don't have to disagree with you, you have to pay an attorney, you have to pay Green and Bradford for engineering work.
We, we don't have to pay an attorney to ask that question on what the city, what the state would give. And again, only then do we make the decision, okay, this is something we want to pursue.